Bowling, welcome commissioners, welcome Bowling Green City. Employees and Reverend Lee welcomes well. I'm Mayor Todd Alcott of the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky pursuant to the above KRS 83A 154. Do hereby call a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky beginning at 4:36 PM on Tuesday, January the 19th, 2021 via video teleconference. Welcome everybody. Friday was a special day for our nation. We celebrated that on Monday for Martin Luther King Jr. It was his 93rd birthday. One of my favorite is the time, what a quote from him, "The time is always right to do what is right." We will do that tonight in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. I'm going to ask everyone to recite the pledge with me. I'm going to stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the republic.
The republic which extends. One nation under God, with liberty and justice.
All right, we're two for two. All right, Carlos, you want to introduce our guest?
Yes, I'm privileged and it's an honor to actually have Reverend Lee from Mount Zion. He's the pastor, the reverend over there at Mount Zion. He also does a lot of work, good work in the community. And I asked him if he could basically lead our invocation today. So today I'm going to ask Reverend Lee to lead us off in invocation. Todd, I'm thinking that he can't hear. He's shaking his head no.
Reverend Lee, can you undo your mute? You can't hear us either?
It looks like we can hear him if Commissioner Bailey can text him and let him know we should be able to hear him if he wants to pray.
I hope that's the case.
Yeah, that's actually what I'm doing right now. Reverend Lee, what we're going to do, put it back on camera. What we'll do is just kind of improvise it. I'm going to have you on the phone. So they're going to be able to see you. But what we could do is basically have you on the phone so they can hear you. Well, I'll just put you on speaker. All right, Mayor Alcott, I can have Reverend Lee on the phone. He's going to lead the invocation. He was having trouble, I guess, with the being on life size and the computer. These things happen sometimes. So he's going to leave the invocation over the phone if that'd be okay. And it's such an honor to have him to give the invocation for our city.
Thank you, Carlos. Stand by.
Are we ready?
Yes, yes, Reverend.
All right, that is great. Father, we come acknowledging that you are the God of all creation and that you are the one who has established government and you've put in place those that are just issued governed up. And so today, God, we pause now to pray for these, this our mayor, we pray for our city manager and for each commissioner. We pray for their families. I pray for their health. I pray, God, that you will give them wisdom in decision making. I pray that you give them courage to make the tough decisions. And God, in a time where we are divided as a country, I pray that you'll be the uniting force. I pray, Father, that you would bless this city because we acknowledge that unless you build the city, those who labor will labor in vain. The word instructs us to seek the shalom of the peace of the prosperity of the city for their and our peace and our prosperity. Today, we confess our sins, not just individually, but confess corporately collectively. And we thank you for being the God of another chance. We pray that you watch over our city, be with us in our lying down and in our getting, our going out and our coming in. I pray, Father, that these that govern, that they will govern as one who must give an account to you. I pray, Father, that they will govern also with the best interests of the common good of all that they serve and will not allow their self-interest to get in the way. I pray, God, that they will never put policies and holistship over people, God. I pray that, Lord, they will govern in such a way that we in Bowling Green and Warren County will be that city that's perfectly healed, will be the light of the world, that others around us, God, will desire to be like us as we strive to do the things that are pleasing in your sight. I pray today, Father, that as you, they proceed to take care of the business of the city today, that you would give them wisdom, guidance, protection. I pray, Father, for others that would bring harm to them, that, God, that you would be a fence around each of your servants. Protect them, God. Protect their families, their homes. I pray that they would prosper, that they would be in good health, even as their souls have continued to prosper. Protect them against this COVID-19 and not only this pandemic, but other things that will come to bring disease and dis-ease to them. And Father, we'll be careful to give you the praise. We'll give you the honor and we will give you the glory. For we acknowledge that apart from you, we can do nothing, but through you, we can do all things. These things we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Pastor Lee. That was very nice. Well, Ashley, will you go ahead and do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Perrigen.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here. Mr. Mizel, do you have comments at this time?
Uh, sorry. We. We have a need for a closed session this afternoon. There will be no formal vote coming out of the closed session. I would ask Ashley to read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 618101C for the purpose of discussions of proposed litigation on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sue Perrigen, second by Melinda Hill. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Do you have any other comments at this moment?
Mayor, I'll call the, call the roll quickly, please.
Thank you.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right, the next item is approval of our minutes for special meeting, January 5th, 2021.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by.
Hill.
Melinda Hill, Sue Perrigen. Any open discussions about the minutes? No discussion at this time. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Next is municipal order number 2021-16.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Brian Scott to the position of electrical inspector and appointment of Jeffrey Adams to the position of building inspector in the neighborhood and community services department.
So moved.
All right, moved by Sue Perrigen, second by Melinda Hill. Mr. Mizel, do you have any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, these first three items in your packets tonight pertain to personnel appointments and a transfer involving the neighborhood communities, neighborhood and community services department, our police department and our fire department. We have Erin Holsey, our HR director, on here with us tonight, and I'll defer to her to give you the overview of these three items as they come up on, in your agenda. Erin, are you with us?
Can you hear me? Okay. So first of all, we have, from our, our building division is in our neighborhood and community services department. And just this, the past meeting, if you recall, we promoted Scott Hunt to become the chief building inspector. And so that left a vacancy at his position. And we had a resignation just a couple of weeks before that as well as building inspector. So we have Brian Scott, who currently is a trades worker, electrician in our parts maintenance department and who we are recommending from one of those positions. And the other gentleman that we are recommending is from outside. His name is Jeff Adams. And you can see a brief description of these positions, their job grades, as well as the starting wages in the memo that I have provided. We, we had to, we could fill these positions many different ways. We have a couple of different certifications in different ways. So, so we did advertise it a little bit differently with some different job titles. And ultimately, we ended up getting 14 applications and we interviewed five candidates who wanted to make sure they did have some general construction or building background, knowing that people typically do not come into this job with the certifications also already in place. That's something that they typically get in the job. And there is the ability for both of these gentlemen to be promoted during their employment, should they pursue those certifications that they need them to get. So let me know if you have any questions.
All right, any continued discussion? All right, motion on the floor. Call roll, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-17.
Municipal order approving the transfer of Josh Livingston to the position of police officer in the police department.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Belinda Hill, second by Sue Perrigen. Holsey.
I'll hand it off to Erin again. Erin.
So Josh was a member of the police department as a master police officer, and he applied to transfer to the fire department. After the first couple of weeks of training, which are intentionally challenging and intense, he requested permission for both the fire chief and the police chief to return to the police department. He felt that that's where his heart was at, was in policing. And so he and we are requesting that you approve his transfer back to the police department.
All right, further discussion? I'd just say that Josh is a fine police officer. I did talk to him personally. And he's better to find out now than to find out later. And he has a lot of respect for firefighters. So I know he'll carry that back to the police department, but welcome him back to the police. So any other further discussion? Roll call.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-18.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Cameron Wallace to the position of firefighter in the fire department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sue Perrigen, second by Melinda Hill. Open discussion, Ms. Holsey.
So as a result of the transfer of Josh Livingston back to the police department, I had a conversation with Chief Coulson, and we looked at the recent pool of candidates that we had just gone through with the 2020 selection process. And we would like to request that Cameron Hill be approved, or I'm sorry, Cameron Wallace. Cameron was very high on our list. We could only hire a certain amount. If we could have hired more in the beginning, I think he would have been in that original group. Cameron is a, he's born and bred in Bowling Green, so to speak, graduated from Bowling Green High School, and went to EKU to play football, and then returned shortly after. And he was exposed to firefighting first as a volunteer through the Plano Volunteer Fire Department. And then he got a job in Frankfort, where he's been for the last two years. So already has some experience firefighting, kind of knows what he's getting into, and is an excellent candidate for the position. Will have to do a little bit of maneuvering with the training and the academy, but he should be able to pick up very quickly. So we're excited that he is going to be joining the team. Do you have any questions?
Further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-19.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Sue Perrigen to the contractors licensing board.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Melinda, second by. Was that Sue?
Beasley Brown.
Beasley Brown, thank you, Dana. This one's for me. The last commissioners meeting, we had multiple appointments. I thought we had them all covered. We did not. There was a contractors board previously. This board was held by Merrill Wilkerson. I had looked at my schedule and knew that there was no way that I could possibly do everything. So again, I'm looking to our commissioners to divide and conquer. Asked you first, and she agreed to take it. So I'm very happy that she's willing to take on this key role and responsibility with our contractors. Any further discussion? All right. Congratulations, Sue, in a minute. Roll call.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Abstained.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Now, learned today in parliamentary procedure by the KLC League, when you abstain, you actually vote with majority.
Just FYI, getting information to have. All right.
I look forward to service.
Copy. Municipal order number 2021-20.
Municipal order authorizing renewal of bid number 2017-37 for police department uniforms from CMS Uniforms and Equipment Company Incorporated of Nashville, Tennessee, Galls LLC of Lexington, Kentucky, and Nats Outdoor Sports of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
All right, I'm going to have to have hand go up for one or two. All right, one was moved by Dana Beasley Brown, two was moved second by Sue Perrigen. Thank you. Jeff, do you have any discussion on this one?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This was a bid we put out a couple of years ago. We've got one more year that we can renew with these three vendors, CMS, Galls, and Nats. This is for the police department. For the first group with CMS uniforms is for shirts, trousers, also known as pants, outerwear, hats, accessories, shorts, embroidery, emblems, all that kind of thing. The bid with Galls is for boots and athletic wear. And then the renewal for the shoes with Nats Outdoor Sports here in Bowling Green. So Chief Delaney is recommending we take advantage of the, the extension of the pricing from these three companies. In your packets, you'll have the letters from all three agreeing to extend the price for one more year, locking it. We thought that was the best, best deal. And this will probably be bid out again next year, I think, for another round of three years. So requesting your approval to renew with these three companies for these supplies for the police department.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Questions? All right, no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-22.
21. Municipal order approving an amended agreement through non-competitive negotiations with HDR Engineering Incorporated for right-of-way acquisition related to West End Greenway and intersection improvements in the amount of $145,058, I'm sorry, $145,058 for a total project amount of $278,353.
So moved.
Second.
Motion moved by Sue Perrigen, second by Carlos Bailey.
So I'm going to try to explain this as best I can. I think Brent Childers may be on here, too, can fill in the gaps. But basically, this was a, a TAP grant we got from the state to do the Greenway, to close the loop over around West End neighborhood and Hops and Grove Park. It's for two, roughly two miles. And we contracted, the state actually contracted with HDR Engineering to do the design work on this and the surveying. That was an original cost, I think, of $126,000 to do design and survey. That is now done. We, we did amend that and added another $7,200 recently, but that is all complete. What's before you tonight is to allow HDR to do the right-of-way acquisition. And if you'll turn to the second page of the memo, basically HDR is going to perform the title search and confirm current ownership, confirm any mortgages, liens on the properties, generate a report, a project report that will lay out the acquisition needs for the project, establish a price per acre value for in a range, do all that kind of work, establish market value, and present all the offer packets to the affected owners for that, for that land, that right-of-way. All this will be part of this contract. We're going to, we're proposing the 145 as an amendment to their existing contract that we were basically tacking on to. The state has worked that out with. And we're estimating that we'll need another roughly $145,000 for the, for them to do this right-of-way acquisition work. So this is, of course, a phased project with the state through the TAP grant. And this would move us into this next phase of right-of-way acquisition for that Greenways Trail. There is still ample money, we believe, in the 1.0, I think it's up to 1.4 million now for the total project to get us home for, for construction. So I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you might have on this.
Thank you. Yes, Dana?
I just had a quick question. Since we're through the design phase, do we have a PDF of the design available yet?
Um.
I didn't see it in the packet, but I, I knew that, that doesn't.
Yeah, we can send that out to you. Would be glad.
I would love to see that. I'm so excited about this project. Thank you, everybody who's been working on it and providing this Greenway extension in this part of town. I know it's going to be a great benefit for that neighborhood.
Thank you, Dana. Further questions, comments? All right, no other further questions at this time. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-22.
Municipal order approving an amendment to the BG Care Small Business Grant Program with small businesses who qualify for economic relief.
So moved.
Second.
Simultaneously, I would say moved by Melinda Hill, second by Carlos Bailey. Open for discussion, Mr. Mizel.
So back in October, as you recall, you guys approved the BG Care Small Business Grant Program that we are using our CARES Act money that we received from the state. We set aside a million eight eighty-five for this program for small business assistance. And as you recall, we also had set aside some money for utility assistance. But we're focusing tonight on this amendment to our small business grant program. What we've run into is that we have so far allocated, or we've actually received 400 applications, and we have, I guess, issued $617,000 in assistance to small businesses in our community. But we are a ways away from the million eight. So Brent Childers and Katie Schaller Ward have worked this, and we believe a tweak is necessary to get this program finished up and get this money to the businesses that need the money. And so what, what's being proposed to you tonight is what we currently have is the one to 25 employees at 2,500, and the 26 to 50 employees at 5,000. But what we would like to propose tonight is go to a three-tier system where one through five employees or FTEs would receive the 2,500. Employers with six to 25 FTE, full-time employment, full-time equivalents, six to 25 could receive $7,500. And then anyone with full-time equivalents of 26 to 50 employees could receive up to $15,000. We believe this is a better move to finish out the million eight eighty-five to get it into the community, get it into the hands to the businesses that are needing it. Brent Childers is here with us and can answer any questions or clarify for the change.
I have a question. I have a question or clarification. Just more for the public to understand and know if they've already filed and received this, that we will go back and review what they filed previously and send them the difference in our new policy, correct?
That is, that is correct. If they, somebody had received a payment back in December, but yet they qualify under the new guidelines for an additional increase, we would pay that difference back. Our plan would be to make that payment as part of next week's check run pending approval tonight. And we can utilize our database to filter those down. I do want to provide one update. Since the time that I wrote the memo, we've now received 471 applications and paid out $817,000 because we pay every week and we get applications every day. So that's the most up-to-date information that I can give you, but it will be different tomorrow. So that is the update for today.
So Brent, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Brent, there will be need to reapply for those businesses that are getting the increment, correct?
They don't have to do anything. No need to reapply. We will just process that payment, and they will receive that difference pending approval tonight.
And Brent, are they going to understand that? Are you going to draft a memo or something saying you're not getting this by mistake, you know, because folks will be getting checks that, that didn't, that haven't been keeping up with the newspaper or this, this meeting or other things. And they'll be getting this check and thinking, well, okay. But they're going to understand that part of that.
Before we process payment or during the, during the processing of the payment, we sent an email saying, congratulations, you've been approved. Your, your payment should be made in the next week or so. And so as part of that, what I would call makeup payment, to kind of use the term, we'll do a separate type of correspondence through that same mechanism saying, hey, we want to make you aware, you'll be receiving an additional payment. And we'll have to break out what those amounts are.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
I have a question.
Dana?
First, thank you so much for working to make sure that our small businesses can get through this pandemic. I think this is such important work. I just wanted to sort of get more information about the first group, the one to five full-time equivalent small businesses. So can you, they, if they've already received a check, this group is not receiving additional funds with this vote, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Well, we have, what we're recommending is leaving them at the 2,500, so they would have already, if they were, uh, eligible and paid previously, then they would not see an additional increase. It would just be those at the six to 50, uh, threshold that would get the, the increase. That is correct.
Um, okay. So can you tell me a little bit about this group and just the, um, I guess the strategy year-round, keeping that at the $2,500 level?
Yeah, so, you know, sometimes you gotta do something to learn how to do it. Uh, and this was our, our, you know, kind of learning how to do this, uh, because obviously this isn't something we've done in the past. We've done similar types of programs, but nothing, nothing on the small business direct grant assistance. And what we started to see was, a lot of the businesses that were eligible were a lot of those smalls. We had about 80% of our, of our payments were to those, um, one to five range. But what we also started to see was a heavy trend line of some other businesses that aren't your, your mainstream storefront businesses. There were a lot of home-based businesses and things like that. Uh, and so what we were looking at was, since we didn't make an exclusion in the regulations for home-based businesses, uh, it opened up a lot of potential businesses that, uh, um, maybe you, what, what, what we wouldn't call mainstream business. Some communities have elected to not allow home-based businesses. We elected, we elected to allow them. Uh, but we were trying to find a good breakpoint of where do we go from that home-based business to that traditional retail, restaurant, storefront, uh, type business? And we felt like the five was, was that mark. Um, and so that's why we made the recommendation on the one to five category. And once you got above the fives, that's six to 25, uh, that's when you're starting to transition more into that, uh, either some type of small office, um, or some type of retail establishment. Um, we've seen applications from businesses that we sure never knew existed here, uh, our business licensing though. But as us as reviewers and people in the community, we weren't, we didn't know that these things were going on in our community. So it's been a, it's been an adventure learning all the things that are going on that we just didn't know about.
Thank you. Uh, what are some examples of the types of businesses that might be in one to five that are not home-based?
Um, the biggest one, uh, is we saw, like, if you take a barber that just does a chair rent, that would be a self-employed, no employees, they would be their own employee. Uh, that we've seen several of those that, uh, also you can get into some small doctors' offices, uh, dentist offices that were closed down for weeks, uh, not months, and during some of the shutdowns, we have a dentist, a hygienist, a receptionist, and we see some of those less than five, uh, uh, offices. Uh, we've seen a couple of, um, other, just kind of that real small office. And what we look at is a full-time equivalent. So even some of your, uh, you'd have a few of your restaurants, but maybe just a couple. Most of your restaurants are over there, uh, depending on their hours, because part-time hours, we're counting a full-time equivalent as 2,000 hours. Uh, so if you were a breakfast-only place, then you might be underneath that. But basing everything on the employee count, we had to focus on that as our breakpoint, as our number, because that's how we established the program. And so that's what we were looking at, is where is that appropriate breakpoint, or attempting to look at.
Well, I, I think this is, um, uh, my only concern is for those, um, smaller businesses that may need an extra little boost. And so I would be open to, um, maybe breaking it down to another subset, uh, so two to five, so just your side business, you know, just your, your, yourself versus the folks who might have two to five full-time equivalent salaries, um, and seeing if, you know, we've got funds to, to give them, um, some extra. Or instead of creating an extra, um, category, maybe saying, "If this is your full, if this is your main source of employment, it's not a side gig. If this is your full-time job, then they would receive, um, the, the extra boost as well." Uh, I, because I just know that they, these entrepreneurs that are running their small business with just a couple employees are caterers, like you said, are barbers, um, all the contractors, you know, do these really small businesses, I would love to see us, um, as the pandemic continues to, to, um, you know, shut down our economy, that we continue to try to support even our smallest businesses. So, um, I guess I, I would love to hear from the other commissioners if they would be open to, um, look, looking into that at least, seeing if we can also bring some additional funds to our smaller businesses.
I, I would add one thing, and, you know, obviously the commission has the authority to make amendments to the municipal order, to the recommendations the staff made. I will say, we did not capture any type of information about primary source of income or secondary source of income. So if any change would be made, I would recommend that we stay to the employee count. We already have that information. It's in our database. It's easily sortable, filterable, uh, for us to know who to process. And any of those other types of information, if we didn't capture it, then we don't have a way of sorting based on that. That's the only comment I would make before the commission discussion.
Thank you.
Brent, yeah, I have to kind of concur to like, I apologize, Mayor. Sorry about that. I apologize. I'm still learning, but honestly.
I'm gonna make sure we, we, we're doing the proper protocol, and I'll call upon you, and Carlos, you got the floor, so.
Yeah, apologies. Uh, I have to kind of echo kind of like what Commissioner Beasley Brown is saying. There's not just the, the barbers that, but there's lawyers also. Then they possibly also, uh, have work that they have freelance people to help them out with. So it may look like one employee, but it could be three people that they're employing as freelance. With that said, we also have our, our, uh, I guess our, our food, mobile food business. How many people are gonna be affected by the pandemic, and they lost business because of that? I would hope, if we're gonna raise some of the, uh, money that's gonna be given out, uh, for the, and, and we should, we should, I agree with that. But we need to also look at those other businesses that need help right now. Because if we don't, we're gonna stall the business that's gonna grow over the future. Is there a possibility that we can give more money for the one to five?
So let me, let me tackle that question in a couple of parts, Commissioner Bailey. Uh, one, we have seen a wide breadth of businesses take advantage and apply for this program. Uh, we have seen, um, anything from the seamstress that does, uh, alterations. And now people don't, but, you know, there was no prom this year, so they didn't have prom to make all the alterations, and they lost that whole prom season. You know, we, we learned about how COVID has impacted businesses in ways that we never thought about. Uh, and, and, and some of them are those very small businesses like you're talking about. Uh, we've, we tend, we've seen a lot of restaurants, uh, we've seen a lot of professional services. We have seen them all across the board. This is not, uh, this is not really geared for one industry. It, it's very widespread. Bowling Green's been fortunate, uh, to build a, a wide berth in the economy, uh, and, and small businesses supported through that. Um, so, you know, as we went through this, we, we first started with, you know, it's gonna be restaurants and those, those kind of marquee that were really shut down during the governor's orders there in the beginning, and then reshut down in the fall. And what we found is there was implications to a lot of businesses that we never even thought about, um, because we just didn't know. Um, we didn't know in, in the interactions. Uh, the second part of your question relates to, can we make a change? Yes, yes, absolutely. Um, you know, this is all up for the city to decide how it wants to do this. Whenever we put this program together, uh, we thought we had all the answers until we started, and we realized, hey, we need to make some changes. So we, as staff, uh, under the guidelines, made the, made the change to do away with the PPP and EIDL restriction. That opened it up to a lot of businesses. We were, uh, we thought that only a few businesses received it. We didn't have any idea of how widespread that, uh, those funds were out there, even to your very small businesses. Um, so yes, we could make a change. Uh, I think that's what Dana just kind of introduced the topic of, out onto the floor. Uh, so, you know, this is up for us to determine, uh, what it is. The memo before you and municipal order before you is a recommendation from staff. Uh, when it comes down to it, it, you all have to say yes, you all have to say no.
Uh, Melinda, I saw your hand.
Okay, thank you. I, I totally agree, um, with Commissioner Brown, and I'd called earlier about your exact question, Dana. But then when they explained to me about the side gigs, and I don't want to increase the money for side gigs. Uh, those people, in my opinion, have their permanent jobs and may not have even lost a paycheck from that permanent job. But I totally agree with you. For those that this is their permanent job, I think we should help them. Um, Brent, I'm sorry, that's probably gonna be more work on you all and the staff, but we've increased the others. And if I was a, if I was my personal employer and I could only get 2,500 and that was my income, I would be hurt that we weren't giving more to those people. So if there is a way, we can go back and ask if this is their primary income, I'm all for it. I think that's what Dana was saying as well. But if it is a side gig, um, Hillary, if we're able to differentiate that legally, if it's a side gig, I'm not for increasing that amount. But their primary income, I'm all for increasing it.
Well, I would say there's a couple of ways of doing it. The, the primary creates an administrative, not just a burden, uh, uh, of an overwhelming administrative difficulty in going back and capturing that information. I think that, but there's a couple of other ways of looking at it. You could, you could break down the one to five category as a, one, um, is just that stays at the 2,500, or you, or you could make another category of the two to five, that's one option, or you could make the whole one to five category, just increase it, uh, if that's what you all elected to do and make an amendment. But I will tell you, after, after me, Katie, Nick, um, McGally, Karen, Emily, all the staff that has worked on this, going back and trying to determine primary or secondary, i- i- isn't just a lot of work, it's a tremendous amount to go back and capture all that.
Melinda?
For this category only, Brent, if we voted to increase it, could we have those people reapply? And then on that, they have to say it's their primary income and take that work off of you all and put it back on the citizen?
Well, I think just making them reapply for that additional amount would lessen that burden. Um, just because not everybody's gonna go back and reapply. Um, but even, even just in administering the program, getting people to fill out the applications correctly and sign where they're supposed to sign and initial where they're supposed to initial and fill in all the blanks has been, uh, a bigger chore than what we ever thought, uh, it would be, that's for sure. We'll do, we'll do the, the will of the commission, uh, that, that's our responsibility. But I, but I wanted to be honest with you all about what that really is.
Dana?
Uh, I really appreciate Commissioner Hill's, um, concerns. I echo those. And I'm just wondering if there's a way to look at the data and determine how many of these were side gigs? And, um, I guess balance that against the administrative cost of doing it all again? And if we feel like, um, you know, that the amount of side gigs is really a small amount of this one to five category, uh, compared to the benefit of all the, you know, small businesses, contractors, everything you said, seamstress to food truck. Um, is it worth this maybe small amount that might go to, um, side gigs, uh, worth to, to save the administrative costs? Or is this a huge, do you think it's a huge portion of this one to five category?
Well, let me, let me say this. In the, in the single employee, then generally that's gonna be the owner, right? There's not a, because you have the owner plus one. So this would be, we have 106 applications out there, uh, that are those. In the two to five category, th- these are ones that we have approved, okay? Well, I'm not counting the ones that we denied because they were ineligible. Uh, in the two to five employee, if, FTE category, there's 121. Uh, and then in the six to 25, there's 65, and then the 26 to 50 are 16. So we've had very few of those much larger, uh, end ones. Um, so obviously, that's why I talk about the, the lion's share of the ones that have been in that one to five. But that's split about evenly between ones and two to fives. Um, you know, and anytime you try to run a program, you try to, as best you can objectively look at, um, you know, eligibility, and that's where we have some concerns on, um, some, so the objectiveness of, is this primary, is this secondary? Uh, based on all the different characteristics and, um, things going on. Uh, and this is what we struggled with too. We struggled with this same thing of where is that line? Where is that breakpoint? Uh, we looked at it at a one to five. I'm not saying that we got it correct, uh, but at least attempting to find what is an appropriate number. Because I know, um, um, without telling you every story of every business that we've seen on here, you know, the hairdressers and the barbers, they're ones, but they've been impacted severely because they were shut down for months and months. Um, and so, but then you also, but how do you look at that one as a, as this, and then this one as this? And that's why we said we gotta treat the ones the same. And that's what we're trying to do, is objectively run this program.
Melinda?
Uh, when you said that, when I think of a hairdresser or a barber, I think that that job's required year-round. It's not seasonal. Have we had any seasonal businesses or are they excluded?
Uh, I'm trying to think. I don't know offhand to say yes or no.
Okay. Because to me, they're not automatically, nothing against seasonal businesses, but normally in the off-season, they have something else.
Right, they have, they have some other thing. Nothing is like really coming to mind as.
Okay, that's fine.
But I don't want to say no, and then as soon as this calls over with, I'm gonna go, "Oh, here's the ten that I didn't think of."
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Yeah, I, I just can't say yes or no on that.
Thank you, thank you.
Sue, calling on you.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with any of this conversation, um, but I, but I, on the other hand, I, I would be for, you know, maybe an extra $1,000 or, or something like that. I actually do have a small business that I run, and it, and it's, uh, it's very small, and it's me. And, um, and I understand that, you know, we wouldn't be eligible. But I also have the city commission, and, and so which is my primary, you're gonna be splitting hairs, and, you know, a lot of people who work, you know, little part-time jobs as retirees, and then they do some little, some gig, but it's important, you know? I mean, I, I haven't had income from that business since last March, so, you know, and that's, that's definitely hurting the finances of the, of this household. So I wouldn't diminish just because you're, you know, just call, you call that a side gig all day long. It's, it's really not exactly, but it would be considered probably here. So I, uh, I, uh, kind of like the idea Melinda had, Brent. I'm, I'm trying to weigh the benefit over the cost of, of, of staff and what staff's having to let go of with the city to manage this ever-growing administrative program. So is it better to just say, "Okay, everybody in the one to five category gets another $1,000 automatically, because, you know, in the spirit of raising the other ones, we should raise them also?" Um, we don't want to penalize somebody because they don't have a big payroll. Um, you don't know what that might be. Even a side gig might have a big payroll. Um, but on the other hand, could we have, you know, through that email system, have them reapply and, well, I don't know, I guess I'd probably.
I mean, we, we, we could establish some type of secondary supplemental application, um, that we could send out to them, uh, just kind of a simple, because we've already got most of their information.
Right.
Um, but.
Do you work a full-time job in addition to this business?
Right. And, and, but whenever we built this whole thing, uh, we built it with the small business in mind. Whenever I talked about this back in October, I talked about, you know, this was built for the mom and pops to be able to sit down at the dining room table, uh, and fill this out. So we kept it very short, very straightforward, very simple. We knew that, uh, language can be an issue for a lot of our small businesses, and we saw the impact of that. We, you know, tremendous number that, uh, we had to have somebody translate for, so we can tell, read their narrative for them. Uh, so we tried to make this as administratively, uh, straightforward for the applicant, uh, so that there's not a tremendous, a lot of paperwork. It's really a two-page form, initial that you haven't broken the law, sign it, send it in. And so, um, you know, anytime we, you go back and add more of those layers, you're increasing the admit, not just administrative on the staff. That's what, you know, that's their job, that's part of it, uh, but also on the applicant side. Um, so I, uh, my recommendation would be really focus on that employee count, neither, uh, a change in the amount or, uh, a change in the break category. Um, and, and, you know, there's always gonna be something that, that, that just happens, and that's the product of, of in doing any type of, of program.
Yeah, I, I don't necessarily think changing the break category is really gonna make a large impact. Um, but that's just me personally. I, I just, I feel like one to five is fair. But, but would you have a recommendation based on the amount of funding that we have left to distribute, because this is the largest category? So.
Right.
You know, are we?
Well, I mean, I think I've made my recommendation to the municipal order and the memo of the one to five. Well, I mean, I think I've made my recommendation through the municipal order and the memo of the one to five. I mean, there's, you know, this is, you can, you can skin this thing any way you want and you can break it down 17 different ways. We were trying to focus on simplicity for the applicant and processing. So I think I would still stand behind my recommendation of the one to five.
And you, and you did, I've looked at several of these applications with several small businesses that have contacted me to say, hey, can you come look and make sure this is, this is going to pass? And, you know, that we're okay here? That's fine. I'm glad to help. But, but I, you know, if, if, this is the lion's share. So if we have 250 small businesses and we increase theirs by $1,000, that's $250,000. Do we currently have enough money? Go ahead.
And I will say, even just that, I'd rent a scenario here based on another option. But even on your 250,000 and the other increases, we might have already received all the applications that we need.
Right, like foresee us running out of money just supplementing the ones that have already applied?
Yeah, we could be there. We could be close to there, I don't know. Because we have another 90 applications that we've already received that we're holding that haven't entered the process for review yet. And so depending on if those are 30 employee applications, which is, we get very few of, or there are more of these, any changes we make, we're narrowing, we're zeroing in on the, on that final number very quickly, just going back and paying all of these.
Right, so, so maybe a, a number of like $750 more might be more, might allow a few others in and then to service all the ones that we already have, rather than run out of money and not be able to take care of all the current people that we have. Anybody want to chime in on that one?
I'm going to go to Katie first, you had your hand up. Do you still have a comment?
I just wanted to reiterate some of what Brent has said. This is a process that we've been utilizing five of our staff members on a committee to review. But then also Brent Scott, at least we are four additional staff members that are processing. And then we've got some licensing folks that are involved in making sure that everyone is up to date on their, their eligibility for the, for the grant. And to answer Commissioner Perigent's comment, the very easiest thing to do is just simply increase that amount for that first category. However, as what Brent has said, that means we'll run out of money that much faster. And knowing now that there could be some more money available for some of these larger businesses that makes it more beneficial for them to apply. They may decide, hey, I want to apply for this now and they hadn't previously. Because 25 or 5,000, great to get, but not really a big benefit to them. 15,000, 7,500, that's a different scenario. So we could get more applications after tonight and with the advertisement and the news reports of this conversation. So if we give all that money away, then, you know, we, we don't have any more to give. So if we get another 100 or 200 applications, we won't have enough to fund all of those. So I guess the question would be, do you want to fund as many as we can? Or do you want to fund this finite number that we've already kind of been processing so far? Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, I saw your hand, do you still have a comment? And then XL Carlos, but Jeff had it up earlier in the queue.
Sorry, I was on mute. I would, I'd like to piggyback on what Katie said. I think our original intent was to help as many businesses out there as possible. And so we had to continue to tweak this to try to get more people in and more people help. So if, if you all do to decide to raise the, the first level, the one to five, I think you, you might need to consider lowering the, the high end, the 15,000 in order to get everybody money. Otherwise, we're going to run, I think we've got a million left roughly to distribute. So it's kind of a, it's, it's a seesaw, it's a toss-up. It's got, we got to find a good balance here.
Right.
All right, Carlos?
I agree, kind of like what Sue said, but also what Commissioner Perigent said, but also agree with the, the, what was said by our city manager. Brent, let me ask you this, is there a way that we can meet in the middle? Is there a way that possibly, maybe it's not 1,000, but we could squeeze at least another 500? And we just also still get like some of those one to five in there? So we're helping out the, the little guy, but we're also helping out the bigger business that's here in Bowling Green. Is it possible and we'll still have money that can go a little bit further?
So it's, anything's possible. The, what I have, what I recommended was the 2,500, the 7,500 and the 15,000. Now you all get to decide, is that the right breakout or not? And if you all decide that that's not the right breakout, that you'd rather see a different breakout, then that's fine. All those scenarios are going to impact how many we paid, how many we can still pay, what that number is. Our recommendation from the staff perspective was the 2,500, the 7,500 and the 15,000. We felt like that hit on those, whenever you're looking at the impacts of those businesses and where those are and, you know, the payroll that it takes to run a, a 30 employee business, that the 5,000 just wasn't enough to really make a difference for those. We felt like on the smaller end, there was a lot more. And keep in mind, we aren't the only source out there. We are not the, the primary cares funder to the, to the economy. The PPP program put way more out there than we did. Some, it was really good, some was not. We've seen a tremendous amount of EIDL loans that are out there. The state has put out some other things. So all we're trying to do is supplement our local economy. And really this Bowling Green has always been, had a strong economy because we valued the economy that is here. We've cared about what is going on. We've cared about our business community. And that culture has been cultivated before this commission was set, but it's been laid before you, in previous commissions. So what we're attempting to do is try to supplement the relief, not to try to provide the, all the relief. I mean, we've, we've read too many stories where businesses have lost more than we funded into the entire program. So this is not everything. It's about just trying to help with, you know, a few months' rent as part of it. It's about looking at, you know, helping cover some of the mask and the sanitizer and the Plexiglas that you see everywhere for a lot of these storefront businesses so that they can operate. None of us anticipated, you know, COVID. If we went back to a year ago now, none of us anticipated. And even in March, you know, a lot of us thought that by the end of the summer, we'll be back to normal. This is going to be a short-term blip. I started developing this program in July and started penciling out, you know, what should this thing look like, looking at some other programs that are out there. And then I didn't think there'd be another shutdown in October, November. So, you know, everything has been this constant evolution of you didn't think it was going to happen and it does happen. And COVID has taught us, you got to be flexible. And now we know that the governor has more money out there for business support in his budget, you know, pending general assembly. And now you have another, another stimulus package, Katie talked about, there's more PPP out there. You know, there's more of these programs. So don't think that we are the only source. We are a complement to the other sources out there. This is a decision that the city, through its leadership of the city manager and the city commission, said, we want to be a part of making sure that our local economy stays. To go back, that's a long way to get to your question of, yes, we can, we can do it. The motion, and not the motion, I guess the municipal order before you all is the 2,500, 7,500, 15,000. So it'd be up to you all to amend that, deny that, or approve that.
All right, Sue, please.
Brent, just to move off a square zero here, I think all of us agree that this is a wonderful program and cannot thank you enough for all the staff and all of that. I personally want to, want to make this happen without any more staff, you know, commitment because there's a lot of other things. You guys do so many other things. But, so, so I, I would be for maybe an amendment of the, of the amounts, but not, you know, going in and spending a lot more administrative time on this. But so, right now we're 2,500, 7,500, 15,000. Before we were 25,000, and what were the other two numbers?
There was just two numbers, there was 2,500 and 5,000.
And 5,000. So we've added another tier. The 2,500 was one to 24 employees or one to 25 employees?
Yes, one to 25, that's correct.
Okay, okay. So now if you're one to five and maybe, maybe we're, I don't know, 6,500 on the middle one? Just making a recommendation so we can all kind of move on. Maybe, maybe you're 12,500 on the lower one? And then maybe you're 3,500 on the, on the lowest one? And, and everybody gets an increase, but it's, it's proportional to how many employees you have, which seems fair. And, and it allows for us to expand the program into other businesses.
So if I, so if I heard you correct, I want to make sure, 3,500 on the one to five? What, what was it on the six to 20?
6,500.
6,500 and then 12,500.
Right, so you're taking 3,500 off of the two higher tiers, but you're giving one back to the lowest tier? So that's still the 2,500 to, to provide for new applications that come in to divert some money. So that's, that's just an idea, I would be for that and.
All right, Sue, Melinda, I'm going to come to you in just a second. I wanted to make a comment in between here. One thing that I know, you have 90 in the one to five that have put in their application and been standing in line. And to me, it's important that they get, you know, first opportunity before we start giving to those already have in the receipt. You know, word of mouth, you know, through our channels, I know it's gone out on radio, I know it's gone out on television, but, you know, not everyone, a lot of people have been, I will say their head is in the game, they're taking care of business, they're taking care of employees, they're in a crisis situation and they really haven't had a chance to look up. And now they're at the end of the year, they're paying taxes, they're trying to take care of employees. Everyone except themselves. And we've opened this up to spend on, transitionally to say, I can pay my mortgage on this. That's, that's significant. So these businesses, especially in the six and up, you know, these are brick and mortar places that have been operating under the restrictions of the governor of not allowing people coming in to send them out in the streets to, you know, I can't come in to my barber, you know? They have been limited. So I, my, my point is, is that those standing in line have not received any. I'd like to have the first opportunity. The second, on the one to five, you know, right now it's written as is, they have to reapply. I would like to keep that application to the one to five. My real instinct is that we keep it across the board, but I understand, I don't want to duplicate hardship onto Brent, you and your team and the extended teams that have been working on this. So I just wanted to add that aspect to this. And Melinda, you had your hand up, or is yours?
Right, thank you. I want to make it as easy on you, Brent, and your staff and everyone at City Hall. But I'm afraid if we don't increase, increase the amount for our one to five employees, it sends a message, we don't care about them. So I'm personally, Sue, I appreciate what you mentioned. I was coming up with two scenarios, just raise the 2,500 to 3,000 and everyone gets an extra 500. And either keep the other amounts the way they have been proposed or lower the 7,500 to 7,000. And that takes care of your additional 500. And then all of the numbers were even, all even thousands. But it's up to you all, but I'm definitely in favor of raising the one to five employees by little, not, I don't want to add more work. So I think we can afford 500 additional dollars for those, that group. But that's just my thought.
So Melinda, you said 3,000, 7,500, 15,000? Or do you have a difference to that?
I had, or I could go 7,000. Either it's the will of the commission, but I think we should at least do 3,000 on the first level, 3,000, and then either 7,000 or 7,500, and then keep the 15,000 as it is.
All right, Jeff, you had your hand up? You're muted, Jeff.
Sorry about that. I just want to clarify that we, we are not, anyone that has received the original 2,500 or the original 5,000, we do not want them to reapply. We want to just, we just want to make up the difference. And so we would pay them an extra 500 or an extra 1,000?
Yes.
Or an extra 1,500 or an extra 2,500, whichever they fall under. So I want to make sure we're clear on that. We, we don't want to have to go through another cycle of, of applications on the people that have already received the first round of funding. So I want to make sure we're clear on that.
Sue?
So I could, I could definitely, and I hope Carlos and Dana will come along so we can, we can get this to a vote. What, what Melinda just said, take the 5,000, take the, take the $500 from the 7,500 and give it to the, to the small, small businesses and, and, you know, if I was one of those guys, I would feel neglected, like the city, you know, I mean, we do care about them and they're as important as anything to our economy. But, but just to keep the money the same, 15,000, 7,000 and 3,000 makes sense to me. Thank you, Melinda, great suggestion. And if the other two are okay, I say we, we roll.
We would need a motion to amend the municipal order to, to change those numbers. And a second.
I'll make a motion to amend the, the numbers.
And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to amend, Carlos Bailey, the second, and Dana. And let's hold that. Brent?
I just want to confirm, because I got a lot of post-it notes with numbers written down because I'm doing a lot of calculating here.
We haven't stated the amendment yet. We just stated, we're waiting for the amendment that has to be stated. So I want to, we want to clarify that.
Yes, that's all I wanted to do was clarify the amendment, thank you.
Oh, all right, Dana? Yes?
And I just want to clarify, do we also need to include in this amendment that we want the folks, like Mayor Alcott mentioned, who haven't received anything yet? That we want, before we hand all this money out and it's gone, we want to make sure those folks get in as well? Does that, does that need to be part of this amendment or is that a separate thing? Or do we not need to make that?
Well, so I don't know. You're saying the people who have pending applications get priority over those who have already applied? Is that what I'm hearing?
She's saying process the ones that have not, the ones that have come in, but you all haven't met about and approved yet prior to raising anyone else's money. But if that's the way you're operating anyway, then we don't have to include that. If we're not, then the motion would need to be that you process applications that you have not reviewed yet and approved first. Then you go back and raise the numbers to 3,000, 7,000 and 15,000.
We're trying to avoid having to issue multiple checks beyond those we've already approved. So that's why we were anticipating to go ahead and clean up anyone who's already applied, already approved, to get them any incremental adjustment and then continue on with our application process under the new numbers.
I agree with that.
Yeah, that's what we were trying to figure out, because we, then we would just continue and the people who have already received would probably never end up with a payment because we constantly getting applications. That's all I wanted to clarify that, that, that question. Thank you, Katie.
So we need a motion to state the dollar values. So Commissioner Bailey and Commissioner Beasley-Brown, what, what dollar values does your motion and second apply to?
My dollar values actually went with what Melinda, Commissioner Hill has basically stated. If it's 7,000, and I think that Commissioner Perigent will come along as well, we amended down to 7,000 for the six to 25, and then we'll go up by $500 for the one to five.
So we're looking at the 3,000 for the one to five, 7,000? So we're looking at the 3,000 for the one to five, 7,000 for six to 25, and keeping the 15,000 at the 26 to 50?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were, we were all on the same page with the numbers.
Yep.
Melinda?
I'm sorry, this is my last question, I promise. But Brent, those applications that you have, that you have not done anything with, is it kind of a first come, first served? If you have that pile, and I turn mine in tomorrow, that pile's going to get reviewed before mine would, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
They're, they're all categorized in, in order and number. And the guidelines state that it is in order of a, of a complete and qualified application. Um, because we'll get some that are not complete and qualified. Uh, that's why we just keep moving and, or until grant funds are exhausted, or until funds are exhausted.
Perfect, thank you. And let me rephrase that, I am not turning in an application. I don't want the citizens that are watching thinking that I'm going to benefit from this program. I will not, thank you.
All right, so Hillary, can you summarize the actual new amendment that?
So we currently have on the floor a motion to amend the municipal order to allocate funds for one to five employees for $3,000, six to 25 employees, $7,000, 26 to 50 employees, $15,000. And there is a motion and a second, so we need to take a roll call.
All right, no further discussion at this time. Roll call, please.
Brown?
Yeah.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. All right, motion passes the, now the original, we still have to pass the original motion that's on the floor.
We do not, we don't have to because we, we, we amended it and it's been approved.
Okay, thank you, Hillary. All right, municipal order number 2021 dash 23?
Municipal order, accepting a donation from the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport for a comp air jet airplane to the City of Bowling Green Fire Department.
So moved.
So moved, second.
Uh, motion is moved by Sue Perigin, second by Melinda Hill. I believe we have Rob Gilliam on to explain a little bit about this great initiative.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Mazzol, thanks for having me. Can you all hear me okay? Good deal. Uh, so, um, aircraft, aircraft rescue firefighting is a specialty skill required for Bowling Green firefighters who are assigned to our Station Two Airport Fire Station. Uh, training for this specialty requires, uh, initial certification, um, FA monthly training, annual live burn evolutions, uh, for recertification, things of that nature. Uh, structural firefighters also required to have basic, uh, airport operations support training. And then our, uh, new recruits are required to have eight hours of initial, uh, aircraft, uh, familiarization training for their 400-hour, um, for incentive, uh, incentive pay. So this, this training is typically simulated by utilizing fabricated props, uh, and scenarios, mostly without the aid of actual aircraft, uh, due to the fire department not having access to privately owned airplanes. Uh, very seldom is an opportunity for an aircraft to become available for any fire department to have access for this type of training. However, the Bowling Green Warren County Airport has, uh, procured a decommissioned, uh, comp air experimental jet airplane and is willing to donate that airplane to, uh, provide, and provide a portion of the airport property to house the aircraft for us. Uh, this is an ideal location as it would allow the fire department the ability to conduct realistic training on the airport property, uh, as it would encompass all the facets of emergency response for aircraft incidents, uh, such as, uh, aircraft and airport familiarization, personal safety, airport communications, selection application of agents, cargo hazards, firefighting operations and tactics. Uh, so an agreement has been created between the, uh, Bowling Green Warren County Airport and the City of Bowling Green to accept the donation for the purpose of, uh, aircraft rescue training for the fire department. Um, that's it in a nutshell, and I can attempt to share my screen. And it will, if you see an airplane come on your screen, then it worked.
The one with the fat top?
It didn't work.
That's fair.
Okay.
It's working.
Lots of the airplane that they're wanting to, uh, to donate that we would like to accept.
Nice.
When do we take it up? I'm kidding.
Well, it has no motor, so really it's only good for training, uh, which is what we utilize it for.
Thank you, Chief, further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2021 dash one.
Second reading binding, ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 0.8932 acre from GB General Business to RM4 multifamily residential, located at 0615 and 631 Chestnut Street and 0524 and 526 East 7th Avenue, presently owned by New Millennium Real Estate LLC, care of Steve Sutton.
So moved, second.
All right, moved by Melinda Hill, second by Sue Perigin. Uh, Jeff is, uh, giving me, just talk about this one real quick. I know this is a 10 and O favor of, by the planning and ordinance commission in favor of, uh, this rezoning. And it looks like it's going to be a nice addition to Bowling Green. And, uh, if there's any further discussion at this time, everything is in the book well laid out on the location and where that is and what exactly they're building. All right, no further discussion, roll call, please.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. At this time, I understand, uh, Mrs. Jackson, we have no public comments at this, for the meeting?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. And we are going to go ahead and close, have a closed session and I'll let you read that.
Yes, and that was, that was read at the beginning and a motion and a second was made. So if you are ready, then for those that are not in on this closed session, we'll leave the meeting and then, uh, just those that are will remain and we will, um, close down the, the broadcast. Yes, and we will not return to open session, we will not, no action to follow.
All right. So the next meeting will be scheduled for February 2nd, year 2021. We'll see everybody, thank you.